Three, two, one.
Good evening. Welcome to the December seventeenth City Council meeting. I am Gina Louise Shara, and I'll be presiding this evening. This meeting and all who participate in it with us on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. We will begin with public comment as we always do. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. To raise your hand, click on Participants in the horizontal menu bar at the bottom of the screen. A column will open with the participants of the meeting. The raised hand feature is at the bottom of that column. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me. I'll do my best to monitor that for people having technical difficulties. But that's, and that's the only purpose that we'll use the chat feature, and it'll only be used during public comment. I'll unmute you, raise your hand, and ask if you would like to make a comment. When you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has equal opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. After three minutes, I'll ask you to please finish your sentence. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment, as it is your time to speak. So while your comments should be directed to us, you'll understand when we don't respond to you. You may speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. I ask that all but the council, please turn off your video until called upon, as comments are directed to the council, and only the person recognized has the floor. We'll do our best to act quickly if someone is clearly acting in a way that's inappropriate, deploying profanity or slurs, or displaying something outside of what we would expect in council chambers. And I'll remove anyone that needs to be removed from the meeting. If you don't wish to comment, you can always watch on Channel fifteen or by streaming on Northampton Open Media through YouTube or on their other platforms. The recording of this meeting will be available on Northampton Open Media's government video archive channel on YouTube, and I thank them as always for that public service. And we are always happy to receive comments by email, and they are equally part of the public record. So please feel free to email us at citycouncil@northamptonma.gov. And I see one raised hand. I think I know what this is about. It is Northampton Open Media.
Hi, this is Dave Newland. I live in Munson, Massachusetts, but I'm here representing Northampton Open Media. And this is a different role than I usually take in meetings, but we held our annual meeting recently. And this year, in addition to selecting a member of the year, we thought it was important to recognize essential media makers in the community that have helped us to fulfill our role in providing these meetings for the community on television and on the internet. And as a way of recognizing that, we're recognizing Laura Kretzler and Annie Thompson as 2020 essential makers in Northampton. And we just have a short statement prepared by our executive director, Al Williams. Northampton Open Media is happy to award Laura Kretzler and Annie Thompson the 2020 NOM Essential Makers Award. This is the first time in our history as an organization we have handed out this laurel. We felt compelled by the circumstances of the year to recognize and absolutely necessary, the absolutely necessary work that these two recipients have done tirelessly and amidst trying circumstances in order that the residents of the city of Northampton have access and transparency in relationship to their government. This is especially important in a time when democracy has been assailed in various forms, and we have been, as a world, living in stress and uncertainty. And Laura, we would just like to say thank you for everything that you've done to help us do what we need to do to provide these for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's the nicest honor I've ever received.
Well deserved.
Thank you so much. As Counselor LaBarge just said, so well deserved. Laura, we could not possibly have done this without you. And you have every step of the way just been gone above and beyond. So, so well deserved, and thank you, Northampton Open Media, for doing that. Okay, next up is Jose Adonstra.
Hi, everyone. I guess I'm just here to raise some awareness about, I'm sure that some of you have seen some of the posts, because you're city councillors and the mayor, you get tagged on social media. And there's been, as I'm sure many of you agree, that sometimes a dangerous anti-homeless rhetoric is raised and violence ensues from not even the police in this case, but from citizens. And it happens all the time. It's very common for young, you know, people to beat homeless people up and for people, for them to get bullied and targeted in that way in general. There's lots of recordings and lots of articles about it, and it's something I'd love to avoid here, if that's at all possible, and that doesn't mean more police presence. That means pushing through and working with some community organizers to actually place these people in homes with some of the funding that was, you know, supposed to do this work. Right now, I'm sure some of you saw someone threw a rock through someone's camper in the parking lot. And, you know, I don't care what, how you feel about the people who are houseless. The minute you start to attack them and throw stones and, you know, act aggressively and violently, you're crossing a line. And, you know, they don't have, the police are there to harass them, not protect them. When they call them, they threaten to arrest them, and they tell the people that are harassing them with racial slurs to go back into their apartments, you know? So they're taking away the only home that some people have with violence. And I would urge you all to find some way to work with the people that are out here to try to give them some resources to locate them before more violence happens. Because these people don't, you know, know, but I don't feel safe using the cops, neither do they, because they don't help us. So, you know, we're going to remember if something bad happens to them. We'll remember. We'll remember as long as we're alive. I'm going to make sure that I remember those people and that I remember who acted and who didn't now, and everyone is going to remember. Good health to you. Have a good night.
Okay, I don't see any other raised hand. Oh, sorry, yes, Counselor Nash.
We have Hildegard on the line here, who'd like to speak.
Great.
Hildegard, you are up.
Yes, this is Hildegard Friedman, living at thirty-five Fruit Street, apartment G sixty-eight Cahill Apartments, Government Housing. I have two things to say. One has to do with my interest in the portfolio that has, is now vacant, that Dana was employed in as a commissioner of alternate policing, policing alternates, which is an outstanding, outstanding commission. And the other is about a dead man, opiates, in Cahill Apartments. First, we see shadows. We all see shadows, even psychiatrists see shadows, but very unclearly, very frequently, our own. When I first applied with a lengthy letter to Laura Kretzler, I either construed or misconstrued that Laura was indicated that you needed, most people needed to be Hispanic or black to be in, and I still sent her that letter. Well, now, having been on the phone endlessly, I don't mean laboriously, I've enjoyed this enormously. With this committee, that committee, I, the moment I heard that Dana had quit, and I did not misconstrue that, I called an evening message into Laura Kretzler, and I even called the mayor. Speaking to Laura Kretzler this morning, I'm sure you can iron this out, and I'll go on to my next topic. Speaking to Laura Kretzler this morning, Laura Kretzler, she indicated that no, the mayor had checked with the committee, excuse me, with the commission, and they did not want it. Well, that is not true. This is not my, you know, we all have shadows. This is not true. I was on the line for the whole time last night, listening to alternates and policing, and they complained that they, or just uttered that they had not heard who was replacing Dana. So somewhere along the line, you're going to iron that out. Detox. A man that I knew very well and his father, the man in his thirties is dead, went into the Bay State Medical Center on November ninth, was dead on November twenty-first. With the permission of his doctor to suicide, he was paralyzed from the neck down. Now, I can't say that one percent everything was due to opiates and due to cartels and this, that, and the other, but I certainly knew a lot, and I have had five detectives since I have been in Cahill Apartments. Not detectives in Cahill Apartments, I hope that doesn't, was not misconstrued. I've had five detectives, and the most important of whom is Craig Carroll, the lieutenant with the detectives, who was also a detective. And it was the last detective that I was complaining and complaining, and I can overdo myself, okay? Am I, I think that the end of my recording.
Time is up.
Okay.
Thank you, Hildegard.
Thank you. Okay, oh, I see a hand just popped up. Hold on a sec. Emily Coffin.
Hi, my name's Emily Coffin. I live in Ward One. I'm here because I thought the Policing Review Commission was presenting. Sounds like that's not looking at it on the agenda. But I am seeing a lot of stuff for reallocation, and I'm just, like, feeling confused and frustrated about why some of that reallocation seems like fifty thousand here, fifty thousand there, pretty arbitrarily. I'd like the council to consider, like, thinking about the community's requests, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, I'm just looking at the agenda now. But I would like the City Council to consider the community's request to reallocate the cut funding in a way that actually helps the community and helps care for the community in a way that lessens the need of police. I don't, I know we're waiting on the police commissioner report, but I think there are things we can do now with that money that's more than, like, what it seems, you know, it seems like there's one thing for the housing fund, but there's a lot of other funds, and I was really disappointed to hear that three hundred thousand dollars just went up wit to replace the missing parking fines. I think that's like a huge problem, so I just would really ask you to act with caution with all this reallocation, when we've been really clear that we want community feedback and having that invest in places that are meaningful. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? None? Okay, we will start the meeting. Laura, when you're ready, could you please take the role?
Counselor Dwight. Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
Present.
Counselor Mayori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda are some updates. I'm going to start with an update on the status of the amendments to the Northampton City Charter. You all should have received a memo from the city solicitor updating on the charter amendments, updating us on the charter amendments. He has drafted, Solicitor Seawald has drafted language that's attached to the agenda, those are the items that are on the agenda, which is currently being reviewed by the State House Council for proper form. As they had not responded in time for this meeting, the hope is that at our January seventh meeting, we can vote on an order along with the language for the amendments so that they can then be submitted to the legislature at the start of their new session. We had hoped it would be at this meeting, but we have not heard back from the, from the House Council. Additionally, Solicitor Seawald's done a lot of work looking into how to encompass the realities of Northampton's elected positions into the rank choice voting amendment section. And he's been exploring what other cities and towns have done. It's not necessarily simple, as is evidenced by Amherst Rank Choice Voting Commission's fifty-three-page report that just came out this month. And so there are a lot of things to consider, but more importantly, there are policy decisions involved before the legal language can be crafted. And both Amherst and East Hampton formed committees or commissions to study implementation. So I wanted the council to be aware of this and be able to ask questions today and at least begin the conversation on how to proceed. So Solicitor Seawald's here. As is Mayor Narkowitz. And so I don't know if people have questions about this. Or Alan, if there's anything you would like to, can you unmute? There you go.
Good evening. The one thing that I'd like to say is that rank choice voting generally for a single position like mayor fairly simple. I think that I could craft something, but the positions that are multiple elected positions is where it gets difficult, and specifically making decisions about how to count those votes. Because in that situation, you need, you need to redistribute from the bottom, but you also need to redistribute from the top. In other words, if there are three positions to be filled and one candidate gets eighty percent, you can see that no one else is going to get to whatever the threshold is that needs to be gotten to. So you need to redistribute from the top, meaning taking all the excess votes from that candidate and putting them, and redistributing them down. And there are a number of ways of doing that, and I've come to the conclusion that I need some help in thinking this through and deciding which, for policy reasons, which method we want to adopt. That's really the focus of the concern. And I think that if you look at the Amherst report, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but they, but that commission did a really good job in setting out the different ways in which excess votes can be counted. So that was my concern. The last thing I will say is that if we proceed with ranked choice voting along with all of the other changes that are proposed, it creates some conflicts, because there are some sections, there are some changes to, for instance, the preliminary election sections that we would proceed with, mostly renaming Smith-Vogue, you know, housekeeping, things like that. And if we adopt ranked choice voting, we won't need those. So it's much cleaner to pass everything now and hold back for a short period of time while we figure out exactly what we want to do for ranked choice voting. And then it's much cleaner to reamend the charter with a completely separate action for ranked choice voting. That would be my recommendation. There are other ways to do it, and so I'm waiting for some instructions.
Thank you. Counselor Dwight.
Alan, have you spoken to Bob Bolbrice or anybody from the organization that promotes ranked choice voting throughout the state? I muted, I'm afraid.
Sorry, I muted myself. I did speak with Bob Bolbrice. I had a long conversation with him earlier this week. We had a long conversation. You know, his background is the Cambridge model, and, you know, Cambridge has been doing ranked choice voting, I believe, since nineteen thirty-seven or the forties or something. They've been doing it for a long time, and they have their process, although their process is disfavored, actually. So these are the decisions to make. Yes, but I did speak to Bob, and he has a rich history of voting and ranked choice voting. And interestingly, Cambridge, which is probably the most educated city in this country, has, until maybe eight, ten years ago, was doing it all by hand and by choice doing it all by hand, rejecting software for it. But now they're doing it by computer, and, you know, those are other decisions that need to be made because we may need to buy new software. I don't know whether we're going to need to buy new equipment, but there's a lot that goes into changing the way you vote. And so that's why I've made my recommendation.
I remember that the city clerk had actually said that the existing software we have would be able to accommodate ranked choice voting, but.
I think there's going to be updates in software. I expect there'll be updates in software. I just hope there, we wouldn't need any updates in, you know, in equipment, physical equipment.
Yeah, I mean, I have no objection to what you're recommending, other than the, my concern is, of course, to move it along fast enough so that if there is a favorable decision rendered that comes back to us, that it would be timely enough to be introduced in a regularly scheduled election, so that's fine.
Well, I expect that whenever this is done, it's going to have to be ratified by the voters, so it's going to get on the ballot, so it's not, no, even in the best-case scenario, we will not be doing ranked choice voting in twenty twenty-one.
No, I'm sorry, I meant. Yeah, that's what I meant to say, so that we'll be able to come before the citizens for their decision.
Right.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Hopefully, twenty twenty-one. Amherst is looking at twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three to, you know, for full implementation. And East Hampton, of course, has adopted sort of a hybrid model where, you know, there are no multi-seat elections that they're doing by ranked choice voting. And each district has two councillors there, so there, it's not a lot that they're doing by ranked choice voting.
Counselor Jarrett.
I just want to make sure I understand the process you're talking about. So we would, we would send a package, pretty much everything but ranked choice voting to the legislator, and there would be an act, a special act for that one, and then we would do another? Is that what would happen?
It's, so the way I've divided these, as you can see in your packet, is there are these housekeeping changes, you know, changing words, just making modifications based upon what we've experienced with the charter over these years. And then there were the voting and election amendments. So that's the way I divided them. I divided them, and so I created one for the sixteen-year-old voting and for the noncitizen voting, and another that is the alternate between no excuse, I mean, automatic mailed ballots, full, you know, voting by mail. And if that fails, the alternative would be no excuse upon request mailed-in ballots. So that's the way I broke them up in those housekeeping, the sixteen-year-old and noncitizen, and the third one would be the mailed ballots.
And the legislature votes on each of those.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I sent them to Representative Sabadosa, and she's been working with House Council on them. I think they might combine them. You know, for me, it was too much to think about how we do all these alternatives, and I'm sure they've been through this before. That's why I sent it to them, for them to, you know, to put it in the form they want it to be in. I don't draft legislation every day they do, so that's why they, that's why they have it, and they're reviewing it for us.
Great, thank you.
Other, other question, Counselor Mayori?
Yes, Solicitor, I was just wondering if you talked to Pam Powers, city clerk, about machines, and just curious about her view.
I haven't yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any. I don't know whether.
So I was curious. We got new machines, I think, for twenty fifteen. Okay, thank you.
Any other?
I will also say that I put in a call to the Cambridge Election Commission, the commissioner, and she never called me back.
Okay. Mayor Narkowitz, is there any, anything you want to add?
Not really. I mean, I think East Hampton ran up against this, which is why they excluded their out-large councillors and only have the mayor and district councillors, right? Solicitor Seawald, I think, I think they only have, they only have single, it's a very limited universe. There were some.
Right, it's a very limited universe, right.
Yeah, so I think that would be confusing to people to go into the ballot box, and some you have to rank and some you don't rank. I'm not really sure how that's going to work. It feels like it should be all ranked choice or not all ranked choice, so it'd be great to have some people really sit down and go through this and figure out how to accomplish that. And because it would definitely, yeah, the out-large one is a little, and especially when you, if you were, you know, you've got the Smith-Vogue trustees, which are all up at the same time, and there's three. And so, you know, that even is a little more complicated than just the top two or whatever. So, yeah, I think it, I think it's, it might be worth for us to just take a pause and study it and give the solicitors some clear guidance.
So, so what would the next steps be?
Well, the next steps would be, once the amendments that I've sent to House Council or to a representative comes back, and we would, I would prepare orders, and we would submit those to our legislative delegation for filing. And then I would, I would think that you, the mayor and I, might talk about how next to proceed, whether we're going to form a small committee, whether we're going to just, I'm not really sure, you know, how best to do that. I loathe to give people more meetings to attend, but, you know, I'm not sure how else to do it.
Okay. Counselors, any thoughts on this process or other questions? Counselor Foster.
I remember our discussions when we were talking about the charter, that it felt important for all of the elected positions to be treated similarly, and I think that that gives, I think that's a worthy goal with this. So it makes sense to me as well to take a pause to figure out how we can make that happen. And it probably is, my sense is a small working group of people who could, who could dig into it to bring forth a proposal that we could then base this, base this ask on.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, Counselor Jarrett, are you thinking about saying something? Okay. Um, okay, thank you very much for that update, and we'll look forward to, hopefully, maybe at our next meeting, getting the order and looking over that language and voting on it, and we'll continue this conversation on how to tackle ranked choice.
Holidays are coming up. I hope, I hope you're right. So we'll see whether we get anything back from them.
All we can do is hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we can do.
Okay, I have another update that actually maybe will answer some of the questions that we heard at public comment, which is on the Policing Review Commission. Their, people were right, their preliminary report deadline was today, but a request was made for an extension to our January seventh meeting. So, so we're going to look forward to that presentation at that next meeting. What Hildegard was, I think what Hildegard was referring to is that Dana Olivo, one of the co-chairs, did resign last week from the commission, unfortunately. Olivo, one of the um, co-chairs, uh, did resign last week from the commission, unfortunately. Um, but as this is now, I think, the third resignation from the commission, um, which is, which, you know, is very unfortunate, but I understand this is a huge amount of time and work that we've asked people to take on. Um, after each one, uh, the mayor and I have gone back to the commission and asked how they'd like to proceed, have gone to the chairs and asked how they like to proceed. After the first resignation, they asked for someone to be um, for someone who had applied that had not originally been chosen to um, to be chosen as a replacement. And for the second one, they did not want a replacement. And um, I haven't, they, as far as I know, they're not requesting a replacement for uh, for Dana. But um, if that's not the case, then I've yet to hear what they discussed at their meeting last night. I know they were going to discuss it. Um, maybe we will hear from two of the the counselors who are members of the commission, maybe they could fill us in. But that's just a, you know, to address what was said uh, during public comment. That's um, that's the situation with that. But we look forward to getting their preliminary report at our next meeting. Um, and those are my announcements. Moving on to other chairs, committee chair announcements, or okay, Counsel Labarche.
Thank you. Um, I just want to announce that our city service meeting that was scheduled for January 4th, 2021, is rescheduled for January 14th on a Thursday at four o'clock PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nash.
Um, so uh, I have three quick things. First of all, uh, we all got a notice from Meredith O'Leary that there was an elderly couple that was in need of some help with snow shoveling, uh, because they were dealing with a health emergency.
Can you speak up, Counsel Nash? I'm having trouble hearing you.
All right, let me walk over, stand over the router.
The router, okay.
Below my feet.
That's where your volume is? Okay.
Okay. So can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So um, yeah, so Meredith O'Leary sent out a notice to us all that there was a couple that was in need of uh, help shoveling their driveway because they were dealing with a medical emergency. Turns out that uh, the the couple was in my neighborhood. I sent out a a plea, you know, and asked for help. I said I'd show up at 10 o'clock today with some shovels. 10 o'clock, five other people showed up with a snow blower and a snow brush, and we took care of the driveway, the sidewalks, the approaches that are front and back door. Um, so I just want to thank uh, my neighbors and, you know, this just really represents the spirit of neighbor here in Northampton, you know, whether it was my neighborhood or anybody else's neighborhood, this is the kind of thing that would have happened. And um, and so I just wanted to say thank you to neighbors everywhere across the city for doing stuff like this. Uh, the second thing is that Counselor Jarrett and I had, were talking about um, for community resources, we were hoping to have some focus on the issue of houselessness and um, and also uh, dealing with uh, rent, the rent uh, uh, the moratorium being lifted. And so um, we've canceled community resources for the month. And I just wanted to report to you all that um, my preliminary research is that um, that first of all, I I recommend that, uh, I had a discussion with Pamela Schwartz and recommend that people go to the um, the Western Mass Network to End Homelessness and subscribe. Uh, that was Pamela's request.
No, we can't hear you. Are you covering your microphone?
Has to be.
It could be. So um, did you hear the part about Pamela?
Yeah, that's right around that she requests that we um, subscribe.
Subscribe and that um, that, I mean, usually I talk loud enough that people can hear me in Florence. So this, so um, that we subscribe to uh, to their updates and that uh, that way we can learn about different political action we can take. Um, and she also mentioned that uh, uh, people working with this population were out last night, uh, working to um, to connect with people on the street and get them into into housing, that that effort was going on. Uh, and then the second thing has to do with community action. Um, there's a Shanna Tetrialt, who is helping um, people around um, rent relief if they're dealing with, if they're unemployed because of COVID. I'll get more information around that within the next few days and I'll share that with all of you. Um, so those are my my rambling updates, if you heard them.
We we did. Actually, you 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 got louder right at the end. You sort of crescendoed, so excellent. I think we've.
Like Wagner.
Okay, other other updates, moving into one-minute announcements. Counsel Jarrett, then Counsel Maori.
Um, so first about the Policing Review Commission. Um, so we haven't had a full commission meeting since we heard of Dana's uh, resignation. Um, so I think there may have been some discussion perhaps in the subcommittees, uh, but uh, so our next one is this Tuesday. So that may give you an update. I don't know if that will be on the agenda, but um, and then um, another announcement, um, so this Sunday, December 20th, from three to four o'clock, um, the Ward Five School Committee member, Dina Levy, and I will be holding another Ward Community Meeting on Zoom. Um, and um, you can get the access information on my website, my Facebook page, or by calling or emailing me. Um, and that's it. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Counselor Maori.
Yeah, you know, I was just wanted to touch base with our community because COVID's been going on for nine-plus months. Um, and we've seen a historic rise in all sorts of mental health um, problems. And the relapse and overdose rate um, has increased nationally by 30% since March. Um, and you know, the pandemic is especially hard uh, for people who suffer with depression and other mental health disorders. Uh, and the holidays especially can be lonely and triggering and have their own stress. So I just want to encourage people to reach out. Um, I have one of my numbers. If it's not backwards, oh, good, it's not backwards. This is the National, let me see if I can get it in there, the National Alliance on Mental Health, NAMI, 24-hour hot helpline, 800-950-6264, 800-950-NAMI. And you can call anytime, uh, and you can text as well, and they can help you find resources if you um, are suffering. There's no need to suffer. Everyone needs to reach out um, and uh, and check on people too by phone and email and have a, otherwise, I hope everyone does have a good holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Other other announcements. Counsel Labarche.
Yes, thank you. Um, I want to wish all my residents in Ward Six and their families, and all the residents in the city of Northampton, and all the counselors who all have worked very tirelessly throughout this COVID-19, and with the help of our mayor and our council president and counselors at large, everybody working tirelessly. It's not been easy. And I want to wish everybody a safe and healthy Happy New Year's 21. And let's get these doors open because we all need to start a new beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, and the same to you. Any, any other announcements? Okay, Mayor Narcoits, Mayor Narcoits, any communications?
Um, just a couple of quick ones. Um, first off, I I just want to thank um, our DPW, uh, who has been out since last night and they're out tonight. The snow emergency's been extended um, for their work, uh, cleaning up uh, the roads. Obviously, it's um, challenging enough in um, in normal times, uh, to deal with a snowstorm of this size and duration. Um, but obviously, when you're adding in COVID and all of the um, safety precautions we have to take to try to keep people, uh, you know, socially distanced and masked and keep our trucks sanitized, um, you know, it's required an extra effort. So I just want to thank them, uh, a lot of sleepless nights last night and uh, and people working through the night tonight, uh, to finish cleaning up. So I want to thank Director LaScalia, um, and her team, um, for their work. Um, the only other thing I wanted to add, just in the spirit of the holidays, um, you've probably been seeing a lot of uh, a lot of the um, public service announcements from the Health Department. So I would, of course, be remiss if I didn't say tonight that how important it is for uh, people to enjoy the holidays, obviously, but really to try to stay home and stay within your family group. Um, as we look at the numbers, um, both nationally and and here in Massachusetts and here in Hampshire County and even in Northampton, you know, we see that when, after Thanksgiving, uh, we saw a very sharp rise um, in our COVID-19 cases. And a lot of the contact tracing um, has now flipped from, you know, back when we were earlier in the pandemic, from a situation that was mostly long-term care facilities, um, to now, most of the COVID exposures are happening um, in small gatherings, in in social gatherings, family gatherings, small gatherings. Um, we're not seeing transmission as much, obviously, in fortunately in our schools, where it's really happening is in is in family gatherings. So just want to reiterate the message from the Health Department, uh, to please um, stay home, uh, stay safe, and uh, and we'll get through this and hopefully be able to enjoy holidays, uh, again, normally with all of our extended family and friends, um, in 2021.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving to our next agenda item. It is um, the vote on the request to reduce the 120-day notification period um, to 60 days for the OMASTA agricultural preservation restrictions. So this is the second reading on that vote that we took uh, two weeks ago. Motion was made by Counsel Labarche.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Foster. Any discussion on the second reading? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Foster.
Yes.
Counsel Jarrett.
Yes.
Counsel Labarche.
Yes.
Counsel Maori.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel Quinnlin.
Can I hear you?
Let me try this. Yes.
Counsel Sharon.
Yes.
And Counsel Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings, and we have reduced that notification period. Uh, next we have the consent agenda. I'll read the titles of the items, if asked, and if there are any removals, because there's no discussion on the consent agenda. So first up are the minutes of November 19th, 2020. Next are appointments to the Northampton Housing Authority and Housing Partnership. These all received a positive recommendation from the City Services Committee. For the Housing Partnership, Ace Taylor, 14 Fruit Street, Apartment One, uh, the term is November 2020 to June 2023. This is to fill a vacancy. Uh, next is Hannah Schaffer, 115 Milton Street in Florence. Term is November 2020 to June 2023. This is also to fill a vacancy. And for the Northampton Housing Authority, um, Edgardo Consal, this is the Northampton Housing Partnership appointee. The term is November 2020 to June 2023. This is to fill a newly created position on the Northampton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Over approval of the consent agenda, please.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, no removals, I take it. So roll call, please, Laura.
Counsel Foster.
Yes.
Counsel Jarrett.
Yes.
Counsel Labarche.
Yes.
Counsel Maori.
Yes.
Counsel Nash.
Yes.
Counsel Quinnlin.
Yes.
Counsel Sharon.
Yes.
Counsel Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda's been approved, and we are now going to recess for the committee on finance. Laura, when you're ready, could you please take the role for finance?
Sure. Counselor Labarche.
Present.
Counsel Quinnlin.
Here.
Counsel Sharon.
Here.
And Counsel Thorpe.
Here.
Hey, first is approval of minutes from November 19th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counsel Labarche, seconded by Counsel Thorpe. Any discussion on these minutes? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counsel Labarche.
Yes.
Counsel Quinnlin.
Yes.
Counsel Sharon.
Yes.
And Counsel Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, those pass, and we are moving on to the financial orders. These are a series of CPA fund orders, uh, that time of year. I see Sarah LaValley is here. Um, and I am going to go ahead and read the first one. This is 20.157, upon the recommendation of Community Preservation Committee, in order to appropriate CPA funds to the Conservation Fund, ordered that whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Conservation Fund, whereas the fund makes possible increased acquisition or protection of open space parcels in Northampton by supporting fast action on time-sensitive real estate opportunities and placement of permanent conservation restrictions, whereas the project meets the goals of the Northampton Sustainability Plan for protection of open space and agricultural lands, and the applicant has used these funds effectively in the past towards the protection of hundreds of acres of open space. Whereas on November 19th, 2020, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend the $50,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now, therefore, be ordered that $50,000 be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Fund, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and city council. Specifically, $50,000 is allocated from the CPA Open Space Reserve. Okay, is there?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion's been made by Counsel Quinnlin, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, Counselor Dwight.
I was hoping that we could entreat uh, Sarah LaValley to break down the requirements under Community Preservation, under the Community Preservation Act. There seemed to be some misunderstanding in public comment about the allocation of these funds and distribution of these funds and conflating them with um, general fund monies. And uh, if Sarah could just give us a brief thumbnail sketch of what the Community Preservation Act is and the Community Preservation Committee and their and their charge on distribution. I'd appreciate that.
I was going to ask something similar, although the person who asked about it at public comment, I think, has left me, but um, it's always good information for us to have or for people to hear, Sarah. Thank you, and thanks for joining us.
Sure, nice to see everybody. Um, so just a preamble to all of these CPA orders. Um, the Community Preservation Act is a unique enabling legislation in Massachusetts that established funding for certain types of projects that, um, you know, communities were really looking to do certain things that didn't have the funding available. Uh, so this is a local option, um, thing that communities can adopt. Northampton was an early adopter, so we've been on board for quite some time. Um, and the the Community Preservation Act requires establishment of a Community Preservation Committee, and it's comprised of representatives from other boards and committees in Northampton, as well as both elected and appointed members. And the CPC recommend, makes recommendations for funding based on applications received. Um, and their decisions are informed by the Community Preservation Plan, which is in turn informed by the city's long-term plans and goals. And funds are created through a surcharge on local property taxes in Northampton. It's 3%. Uh, that's the maximum. Other communities have adopted less than that. And that is matched by state funds that are generated through Registry of Deeds receipts. CPA funds are dedicated to four eligible areas of open space, historic preservation, recreation, and affordable housing. Open space and and recreation are a little bit combined, and the the act requires us to set aside 10% of our revenues each year for open space, um, historic preservation and housing. And these funds are separate from all other city funding and cannot be used in general government expenses.
Thank you. Um, okay, so. Um, okay, so do is, is there anything you want to add for the Conservation Fund?
Or just a quick overview that this has been funded many times in the past. I believe this is the 13th iteration of this particular funding recommendation from the CPC and the city council. And it creates a pool of funding that's readily readily available for soft costs for open space acquisitions. These can be things like appraisals, legal research, surveys, environmental assessments, as well as purchase costs for smaller, less expensive acquisitions. And it's an invaluable source of funding for very time-sensitive purchases that could otherwise be sold for other purposes before funding could be lined up. And it's enabled the protection of many acres that would not otherwise have been possible. City council typically sees a few large acquisitions each year. And although you don't see it, there's always some initial due diligence investment through the Conservation Fund that's making those big exciting land protections possible.
Okay, thanks. Any questions? Council Jarrett.
Thanks and thanks, Sarah, for that overview. So I just wanted to speak a little generally about our priorities, the priorities of the CPC. So, you know, I'm very much appreciating the CPA, all that it supports, including this specific order. I am concerned about the percentages that we're spending on the various categories of CPA funding. As you detailed, you know, at least 10% of the revenues have to be for open space slash recreational use. 10% for historic preservation and 10% for community housing. But then the 70%, you know, the CPC just gets to decide how to allocate that. So I did some research of the orders that were approved by the council in the past two years. And maybe you have, Sarah, you have these more, you know, have these numbers that might be more accurate, I'm not sure, but my research showed we've spent about 16% on community housing, 23% on historic preservation, and 61% on open space and recreation. So for this year, it's 10 and a half percent for community housing, which is just the order that's that is before us a little bit later. And, you know, that was the only application for the community housing portion. So it's not like any action we can take tonight could allocate more in this round. But I do think it's appropriate for future rounds that we that we have a community conversation about our priorities. And I wondered, Sarah, if if is that the CPC plan? That is, that like, how can people engage in the planning and the priorities with the CPC?
Sure. So I guess two things, the slightly updated numbers to include everything through this past round. So not things that are before you, but everything prior to that. It's 23 and a half percent for historic preservation, 19.8% for housing. And if you separate out open space and recreation, 30 and a half percent for open space and 26.2% for recreation. And again, that doesn't include things that are before you now. So the the Community Preservation Committee makes recommendations based on competitive funding applications. So like affordable housing projects, for instance, might come before us one year, but there there may be a gap. We have certain people that we work with, like Valley CDC, Habitat for Humanity. And they have a few large projects that they deal with and then may have a gap of a few years. So if people wanted to engage about priorities and and how the the funding should be spent, public hearings on the Community Preservation Plan are one way to do that, and those will be occurring in early spring this year. There's also a public comment period at the beginning of every meeting of the Community Preservation Committee, which are now also held on Zoom. We typically meet the first and third Wednesdays of every month. And also public input sessions during each funding round. So there's typically two every fiscal year, and there's a dedicated public comment session during each of those.
And then in terms of getting more, like in this case, this is the only application for community housing for the whole year, perhaps. That's sort of what it looks like. But it how, so would we go, if we wanted more, would we encourage? We would, we would try to go to to the actual applicants, encourage organizations to apply.
Yeah, definitely. So the the Community Preservation Committee doesn't initiate these projects on their own. But we we work closely with city agencies and nonprofits and affordable housing developers to ensure that they're they're funded when they do, when they do come on. But if people are interested in creation of more affordable housing specifically, they could reach out to the the city's housing committee as well as other nonprofits in the area.
Thank you so much.
Council Nash.
So Sarah, is it fair to say when whenever we have an application for housing, affordable housing before the CPC, we're strongly leaning towards funding it, correct?
Yes, that that's absolutely correct. There have been instances, happily, this funding round was not one of them, but in the past, funding is limited and the committee has had to make really tough decisions about what can be funded and what can't. And some of some larger affordable housing projects were only funded partially. They still were created. This was just the the city's portion of a much larger funding pot. But absolutely, the committee has supported every, I think, every single affordable housing application that's ever come before it.
Thank you.
Council Maori.
On that vein, since we're talking generally, I was, I've heard that like East Hampton, perhaps Amherst, has looked into or is using some CPA funds for short-term rental relief for this during the pandemic. And I don't know if that's something anyone's applied for here, or I assume what happens then is that there's some sort of social service agency that applies and administers those rental relief fees, I mean, funds.
Yeah, definitely. So we specifically reached out to agencies that may be appropriate to do that type of an activity. And they let us know that they had enough funding sources available from Community Development Block Grant and other sources at the moment, so that CPA wasn't necessary at this point. But that's certainly something that may come up in the future.
Right. I'm thinking with the moratorium being lifted on evictions and or closures, that we're going to see a lag and then we're going to see a lot, a lot more people struggling.
Yeah, I'm happily in North Hampton. There there are some other resources for emergency rental assistance. So it's not that those programs don't exist. It's just that CPA isn't, isn't the the right funding mechanism at the moment locally to have that come before city council.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments? And this is really supposed to be about the Conservation Fund. Um, okay, roll call, please, Laura.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Quinnlin.
Yes.
Council Sherah.
Yes.
And Council Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with a positive recommendation. Next up is 20.158. In order to appropriate CPA funds for the Smith Charities Emergency Repair Project. Ordered that whereas the Smith Charities submitted a CPA application for critical exterior repairs to the Smith Charities building at 51 Main Street. Whereas Smith Charities have operated continuously since 1865 from the building, which was designed by noted architect William Fennell Pratt and is located within the downtown National Register Historic District. Whereas the project will address the most critical needs identified in an historic building assessment to ensure that it will remain a unique part of the downtown streetscape in the future and will leverage state grant funds. Whereas CPA funds will be utilized exclusively for critical exterior repairs and in no way contribute to the operating expenses of Smith Charities. Whereas on November 19th, 2020, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $85,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore be ordered that $85,000 be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the Smith Charities for Smith Charities Emergency Repairs Project and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and city council. Specifically, $85,000 is appropriated from CPA Historic Preservation Reserve. There.
Move to approve, please.
His motion on a positive recommendation.
Positive.
By Council Quinnlin. And who was the second?
Council LeBarge.
Council LeBarge. Okay, um, Sarah, would you like to talk about this?
Sure. So a in historic building assessment was funded through the CPA a few years ago. And that thorough evaluation of the Smith Charities building on Main Street outlined and prioritized necessary work to secure the building envelope. And CPA funds will be used as a match for a state grant. And the building will also be protected through a historic preservation restriction that will require approval of changes that could affect the building's history in the future. The CPA and the Historical Commission both agree that 51 Main Street is an important building to the downtown and the history of the city, and that these repairs are really necessary at this time.
Okay, um, and the it's a matching, an equal match?
Uh, I would have to, I, it was initially intended to be an equal match. I think Mass Historic had their funding cut slightly, so the city is more than 50% at this point.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none. Roll call on a positive recommendation.
Council Quinnlin.
Yes.
Council Sherah.
Yes.
Council Thorpe.
Yes.
And Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation. And next is 20.159. In order to appropriate $55,000 in CPA funds to AOM Academy of Music Lobby and Salon Rehabilitation. Ordered that whereas the Academy of Music submitted a CPA application for Lobby Salon and Downstairs Hall Rehabilitation. Whereas the work will conform the Secretary of Interior standard for historic rehabilitation will complement theater restorations already completed using CPA and other funds and will take advantage of COVID-19 closures to prepare for reopening. Whereas on November 19th, 2020, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted to recommend that $55,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore be it ordered that $55,000 be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the Academy of Music for the Lobby and Salon Rehabilitation. And that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and city council. Specifically, $55,000 is appropriated from CPA Historic Preservation Reserve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made by Council LeBarge and seconded by Council Thorpe, I think, couldn't see. Um, Sarah?
All right. So the Academy of Music sought CPA funding to take advantage of being close to the public during COVID to begin a next phase of interior rehabilitation. And this follows the incredibly successful completion of restoration of the theater. The Lobby and Salon areas have been modified over the years with some interesting choices. And this work will remove some of the incongruous elements while also improving visitor experience at the Academy.
Council LeBarge.
Sarah, is this the last stage now of redoing the Academy?
Uh, it is not. The Academy's next phase will be to reopen the upstairs. Uh, but but that's, that's in the future, and I don't know how their their plans have been affected by COVID at this point.
Thank you, Sarah.
Other questions? Okay. Seeing none. Roll call on a positive recommendation, please.
Council Sherah.
Yes.
Council Thorpe.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
And Council Quinnlin.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation. And next we're up to 20.160. In order to appropriate CPA funds to the Pine Brook Connector Acquisition Project. Ordered that whereas North Hampton Conservation Commission and Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted a CPA application for purchase of 53 acres within the Broadbrook Fitzgerald Lake Greenway on Boggy Meadow Road. Whereas the parcel includes a perennial stream, rich wetlands, upland habitat, serves as a critical segment of an existing wildlife corridor, is adjacent to already protected open space, and will provide an additional entrance to the greenway from Bridge Road. Whereas the project meets the goals of the Sustainable North Hampton Plan, North Hampton Community Preservation Plan, and Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail Plan. To protect open space, provide for passive recreation, and protect heritage landscapes. Whereas on November 19th, 2020, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $160,600 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore be it ordered that $160,000, $160,600 be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the North Hampton Conservation Commission and Office of Planning and Sustainability for Pine Brook Connector Acquisition Project. And that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and city council. Specifically, $73,400 is appropriated from the CPA Open Space Reserve and $87,200 is appropriated from the CPA budgeted reserve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council Barge, seconded by Council Thorpe. Sarah.
All right. So this acquisition was approved by council back in June. So this order is only for the CPA's contribution to the land protection. And as the order noted, the property is located on Boggy Meadow Road, and it's kind of sandwiched between the city-owned Broadbrook Fitzgerald Lake property and a protected Lakesworth Communities parcel just to the east. It includes a riverfront area along Pine Brook, a mixed oak forest, a shallow marsh and a perched swamp that's associated with the large and seemingly getting larger Beaver Pond just to the west. And it will also create a new access point from Bridge Road through the cemetery that because the property comes with a right-of-way, and it includes tremendous trail potential. People are already using it. You know, you can't even tell if you're out there that it, this is private. It just seems like part of the greenway already.
Council LeBarge.
Yes. So Sarah, this is not a new order. This is an extension off of Pine Brook.
Uh, so, so city council already approved the acquisition. This is just approving the funding for it.
Okay. You know, when, I'm just gonna kind of like repeat what Council Alex Jarrett was talking about. I'm for, you know, conservation land and preserving it. But when people see a large amount of money going into conservation versus affordable housing or whatever. And I've had people question me about that, and I brought it up before about this problem. And when you look at a price tag at 160,000 versus 50,000 or 85,000, 50,000, it's, I have some concern with it. And, and I think Council Dwight, if you remember how we did have some people several years ago raising concerns about the open space, just like we did up on Turkey Hill Road and so forth. Why is it not affordable housing on it? And that's my concerns here. So I just wanted to let you know that, Sarah.
Other questions or comments? Council Jarrett.
Um, yeah, I actually went skiing on this property today. So I'm glad to see that this is moving forward. But one thing, so this is very close toward five, but kind of right across the street. And that, and so the property is is really near the multi-use trail that runs between Florence and North Hampton. It's also to nearby economic justice neighborhoods, like the Meadow Brook Apartments. But it's very difficult to cross Bridge Road from from that side to where the new access point would be. So I guess this is just a note for the planning department that to think about how we're going, how people are going to access this, especially on foot, because it's really close, but it's hard to get to.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, Laura, on a positive recommendation.
Council Thorpe.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Quinnlin.
Yes.
And Council Sherah.
Yes. Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation. And last, we have 20.161. In order to appropriate CPA funds to the Affordable Housing Fund. Ordered that whereas the Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Affordable Housing Fund. Whereas the fund will be used for soft due diligence and soft costs for pre-development work necessary for new affordable housing. for new affordable housing opportunities that the city creates, and for which no other funds are readily available. Whereas this fund will result in new affordable housing opportunities in North Hampton, meet the goals of the North Hampton Needs Assessment and Strategic Plan, and will help to address impediments to fair housing identified in the Fair Housing Assessment. Whereas on November nineteen twenty twenty, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that fifty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore be it ordered that fifty thousand dollars be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the Affordable Housing Fund. And that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and city council, specifically fifty thousand dollars is allocated from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve.
Move a positive recommendation, please.
Motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. And Sarah?
All right. Uh, so this is a little bit similar to the Conservation Fund, um, but to be used for the purpose of creating affordable housing. And this will make funding available for city pre-development, due diligence, and soft costs for affordable housing project. And for housing, this could include things like environmental site assessments, surveys, lead paint assessments, legal work, on all the permitting necessary to make the sites available to affordable housing developers. Um, you know, the the Office of Planning and Sustainability is in the business of creating actual affordable housing units, but doing all of the work necessary to allow our partners to be able to do that, uh, so that this fund will assist with that. So the, at this point, uses for the fund are proposed to be utilized mainly for three identified affordable housing opportunities that the city plans to create. And these have all come up fairly recently, although some of them were a long time in the making. And additional sites will be brought in as opportunities as arise. Um, and the the first three sites, I know these have all come before city council in in various forms, but Laurel Street, this was part of the former North Hampton State Hospital. We estimate twenty rental affordable housing units there, and this was acquired from the twenty twenty acts of the legislature. Two seventy-eight Burt's Pit Road, this was also a former North Hampton State Hospital property. Estimate two homeownership affordable housing units, also acquired for twenty twenty as to the legislature. And the last one is Woodland Drive, a former tax title parcel that was donated to the city in twenty twenty, and, um, that will most likely be one market rate in order to homeownership affordable units.
Okay, thank you. Could you repeat the amount of units, um, the Burt's Pit one?
Yes. Burt's Pit likely two. Uh, and again, these are all in the very early stages of due diligence, because there there really isn't any funding available at the moment, um, to go beyond what we've already done.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Council President. So Sarah, so these funds are not for affordable housing. They're they're, the the funds are to help encourage, do the pre-planning and that sort of thing for affordable housing, correct?
Yeah, so so this will set up, um, you know, a Valley CDC or a, uh, um, Habitat for Humanity with a successful project, that they have all of the information they need to.
And so this is just as important as the the funding for the actual construction.
Yeah, I mean, thi- this funding has to occur. You know, these environmental side assessments and the the permitting, these are all incredibly necessary activities. Uh, if if the city doesn't make these ready for development, this is an additional expense that our partners would need to take on. And funding for these types of activities are are really limited and hard to come by.
So, um, so we're setting, we're we're setting aside this funding for spending this fiscal year. If it doesn't get spent, where does it go?
Uh, if it, so all of the CPA grants are for three years. Um, so this funding will be set aside for this project for three years. Um, I I think it unlikely that it will not be spent. Um, but if after the three years, um, the the Office of Planning and Sustainability says, you know, we have a plan to utilize the funds, um, you know, we'd like an extension for this, then then that would be a possibility. Uh, otherwise it would be returned to the Community Preservation Act. But again, I I don't see that happening. I think there will be a high demand for this work.
So that this could be a way for us to set aside funding for affordable housing that promotes it. Um, in a, we could possibly do this in a more aggressive way by putting money, so this year, we don't have an affordable housing project before the CPC. And again, the CPC is a publicly elected body, and they make their own decisions here. But that, um, that they could make a decision to set aside a larger portion to, uh, increase the amount of money in this account, correct?
They they certainly could could do that. Um, it was discussed, uh, but they agreed that since this was the off, this is what the Office of Planning and Sustainability proposed as what was necessary for the, you know, this is the first go-around of this project, um, to recommend this at this point, and then if additional opportunities beyond these three lots, um, come about, then that could be revisited in the future.
So so this could be a way for us to set aside funding in the future for between projects that we're still pushing the 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 ball uphill to make sure that affordable housing is happening.
Sure, definitely. And and I would certainly anticipate that if there's a high demand for this work, and and there are additional opportunities that come up, that this would come before the city council again.
Thank you.
Sarah, just to be clear, if if it were not to be spent and it it were returned, it would go into the Affordable Housing Reserve, right?
Correct.
It wouldn't go into like the general CPA pool. It would still be not affordable housing. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Like people are thinking, but you'll get another bite at this apple. All right. Seeing none right now. Roll call on a positive recommendation, please.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with a positive recommendation. And no further business on.
Move to adjourn Finance Committee?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Labarge to adjourn. Roll call, please, Laura, adjourned.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned out of finance and back into the full council where we are going to take up these CPA funds. Uh, okay, twenty point one five seven, in order to appropriate CPA funds to the Conservation Fund.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Discussion. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Next is twenty point one five eight, in order to appropriate CPA funds for the Smith Charities Emergency Repair Project.
Move approval, please.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on first reading? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Next is twenty point one five nine, in order to appropriate fifty-five thousand dollars in CPA funds to Academy of Music Lobby and Salon Rehabilitation.
Move approval, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Discussion. Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Next is twenty point one six zero, in order to appropriate CPA funds to the Pine Brook Connector Acquisition Project.
Move approval, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on first reading? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes. Okay, that passes in first reading. And the last one of these is twenty point one six one, in order to appropriate CPA funds to the Affordable Housing Fund.
Move approval, please.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Maori. Any discussion on first reading? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Hey, that passes in first reading. Thank you so much, Sarah. It was good to see you. Okay, moving moving on to financial orders on second reading. We have twenty point one five six, in order to appropriate free cash sixty thousand dollars to Health Department for temporary COVID nineteen staffing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
That passes on second reading. Moving down to zoning, zoning ordinances. Uh, not yet referred. So there's the process note on this, which is that Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, Section Five requires that the city council submit zoning ordinances to the planning board for review within fourteen days receipt, and for the planning board and city council, or committee designated for that purpose, to hold public hearings thereon together separately prior to adoption. So, and I know that we already have a plan for this. Counselor Dwight's about to tell us about it.
Actually, Laura's gonna have to help me, but we propose to hold a joint hearing between Legislative Matters and the Planning Board on all of these items, that's items twenty point one six three two one seven two, right? Yeah. Um, and, uh, in, uh, Laura, do we, I'm sorry, you've got a date.
Fourteenth.
That's correct.
Sorry.
Seven PM.
January fourteenth, seven PM, joint hearing between the planning board and and the Legislative Matters Committee. And that would be my recommendation, actually, to refer them as a group to those, to that joint, uh, hearing.
Okay, so the motion is to refer them as a group to Legislative Matters Planning Board for a joint hearing on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
The second came from where?
Counselor Nash.
Counselor Nash, okay. Uh, discussion on that referral. Counselor Mary?
Um, it's actually just more about, so do you start, I'm just trying to understand, are these piecemealed, is there a, a, is there a document that has all of entire bylaw? Are these just pieces of it? Okay. Does that make sense?
Or were you about to answer that?
Well, there's many different sections of the zoning ordinance that need to be amended in order to implement the proposal to allow two families by right in all residential districts. So there's a separate ordinance to amend each separate section of the code that needs to be amended.
Okay.
They're not, they're not really all together, exactly.
Pieces to this larger piece of the puzzle. That makes sense.
Right.
But, but they are amending, uh, existing statutes under zoning. So if you go to.
Right, find the original document, right?
Exactly, exactly.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Counselor Dwight, where you could say if you go to the, uh, original.
Yeah, if you could actually go, y- you can go through the planning department's website, and you can find all the zoning, and in fact, you'll see these, each one of these refers to where it would occur in in those documents, and you'd be able to find the section. And for comparison purposes, to see what's being proposed, but it's also embedded in the documents as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Nash?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what we're, we're able to do around outreach around this reasonably significant change. And that, um, you know, I I'm hoping that the paper will make a point of covering this, this topic, and that, um, I I know that the planning department has, uh, posted discussions about this with the planning board. But I'm, it's, this is one of those big picture things that's happening pretty much all over the city. And that, um, just want to put it out there. I think we'll, you know, us as counselors, we're really going to need to be letting people know that this discussion, this important discussion is going on. Um, and and hopefully the paper and other people will pick up on it, so.
I agree. I feel like this is, uh, my mantra for this evening and maybe for twenty twenty-one. We can always hope. We can hope that the Gazette will cover this. Um, I I agree that this would be, it's something that, uh, the word should be gotten out about, and so we'll all do our part, but that would be great. Counselor Foster?
Uh, to Counselor Nash's point, it's what I've been turning over in my head and not quite articulating yet. Um, but I I'm thinking about a format to share these proposed changes, um, with residents that isn't and and I can certainly do this work. I I'm just thinking about, you know, here's all of these proposed ordinance changes, but, um, just the need to come up with a document that's sort of easily digestible and easily understood to allow for, um, public to really participate, um, Counselor Dwight, or.
Would you like to take that?
Yeah, I I was gonna say, uh, Carolyn Mish would be very helpful, and actually, we would probably give you an illustrative document that you can s- share as PDF, or, uh, we'll, we'll be seeing them presented in all likelihood. That's usually the case. You see table, uh, Carolyn prepares tables that digest these down with photographs and descriptions about what the impacts on the changes and modifications would represent. So, um, there may be a more condensed version, or she could work on something like that possibly, but I I would speak directly with her.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Just want to make sure that people have the means to be engaged in this discussion. Yeah.
And people should be encouraged to attend the public hearing, which is where this will all be explained and gone into in great detail. Uh, Counselor Jarrett, what happened to your, your little, oh, there it goes. Your name under, not that I forgot who you were, but it disappeared out of nowhere.
It disappeared, oh. Um, the, oh, yeah, so I remember they actually, the planning department produced a very helpful document, but that was the draft, um, that was pretty digestible form. Um, and I wonder if there's been an update to that that now incorporates the actual, and this is something I can ask Carolyn um, about, but I think that would be very helpful to have an update to that that incorporates what's actually in this proposal, because there have been some changes since that draft. Um, and that that would be something we could put out. Uh, so I'll follow up with Carolyn and see if we can get that, and then she could share that with the council.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Mary?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to understand. So January fourteenth will be a joint, uh, public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, that does seem very efficient. And then do, there's a legis, there's legislative matters, and the planning board then vote independently to recommend at that point? Or mutually, you know, positively or negatively recommend?
We vote as separate, we vote as separate committees and separate bodies, but we hear, it's all the testimony uh, is is delivered so that we can experience at the same time.
Oh, I see.
And and, um, one, either the chair of the planning board or the chair of Legislative Matters would be presiding over the meeting, over the hearing. That's usually. That's usually how we've done it.
Yeah, and then when you vote at the same night or at the next Legislative Matters and Planning Board?
Um, you, you, yes, you are able to, um, vote and make your recommendation that same evening. Depending, um, you know, if if everyone's agreeable to that, then yeah.
Okay. So Family Feud style, planning board over here and Legislative Matters over here. No, not like.
Yeah, pretty much.
So.
I knew it didn't like that.
Yeah.
Other, uh, questions or comments on this referral? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. Okay, that is referred and there will be a joint hearing. Next, we move to ordinances. And we have twenty point one five four, an ordinance relative to a stop sign on Edwards Square. This, uh, got a positive recommendation from Legislative Matters on December fourteenth. And so to read it quickly, this is upon the recommendation of Transportation and Parking Commission. Um, these are always hard to read, but this is, uh, uh, Section three twelve dash one thirteen, Schedule twelve, stop and yield intersection. So the location's Edwards Square. And the direction of travel is changing from west to north and the intersection is now um, North Street, whereas previously been King Street.
Move approval, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight and seconded by Counselor Labarge, I think?
Yes.
Okay, um. Discussion? Counselor Nash, did you, or Counselor Jarrett?
Well, it, we have two, uh, TPC things. Why don't I take a stab at this one and then Counselor Jarrett can can handle the next one. Laura's, um, Laura's pulling up some pictures here that I took that, um, uh, demonstrate what's going on here. Laura, can you show? Let's see, yes, that one's very helpful. So first of all, a round of applause to Wayne Fiden and, um, and getting the grant money to, for this Edward Square off ramp for the bike trail on onto Edward Square, the roadway. Um, we've been, this has been ten years in the making. Uh, but one of the outcomes of that is we have this rather unusual, uh, uh, situation where we have the the bike lane actually coming into the roadway itself. And that, um, and that, I discussed this with Director Lascalia, and she's pretty certain there's not another one like this in Western Massachusetts. And so hence, the reasoning for the stop signs at this location that, um, Laura, can you go back to, there was that first one you showed?
Okay.
Three pictures here. Let's see, the first one on the left there.
Well, that's on the right.
Yeah. Yeah, so what you see here is the, the, the travel lane for vehicles is now being pushed over to the left to make room for the, um, for the incoming lane from the bike lane. And also, what's also going on at the same time is that uh, vehicles, there are some vehicles who will take a right turn into the parking lot to the, to the right there. Um, so you have all of these, these different things going on. This is the reason for the the stop sign at this location. The other thing, the, the last thing is you see some lines being crossed out in this order that, um, there, there's actually an, a, um, on the books, there's a stop sign at the other end of Edward Square. Um, that is no longer going to be there. Um, um, and I guess we could imagine that that's a new location. So, um, that's my, that's my explanation.
All right, I'll just note what I noted at Legislative Matters, one, that the stop sign onto King Street really doesn't make any sense, because that's a one-way street in the other direction.
Right.
Um, and that those stop signs, you see in those pictures, are not artist renderings. Those are stop signs that are already there.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Those were Dwight, did I preempt what you were gonna say?
You did. Thank you, thank you. Yes, these, this is a formality to change the books, whereas the action has preceded the sausage making, so.
Um, any other comments on the already existing stop signs? Counselor Jarrett?
Um, yeah, Transportation and Parking, um, at some point, I asked the question of like, when do we decide to put stop signs at T intersections? Because uh, you know, by default, they're not there. It's, the assumption is that the street that doesn't continue should stop. So this one clearly seems to meet the criteria. Um, because we have, you know, the significant traffic volumes and the the contraflow bike lane. But it's, it's a question that's sort of come to by residents have at various points to say, you know, oh, there should be a stop sign there because, and, um, so I think it's, it's helpful to have clear guidelines about when, and understand those guidelines about when uh, the stop signs are put up, so we can share that back with our constituents.
Thank you. Counselor Foster, then Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Jarrett, I've worked, um, with this with Director Lascalia. Um, there's a, an intersection in my ward that, um, does not meet the warrants for a stop sign, uh, but perhaps has some sightline issues. And she's shared with me some incredibly helpful um, kind of lists of what it, what it takes, um, at various intersections, and I'd be glad to share that with you. Learned an awful lot about such, um, stop signs these past few months.
Counselor Dwight, then Counselor Nash.
As, um, as someone once referred to the, as, themselves as a crusty old politician. Old timer, basically, the, um, historically North Hampton and other communities, what they did was a counselor could always curry favor with a constituent by just randomly putting up stop signs based on a, on a simple request. And that's, you'll see stop signs in in the city from time to time, although for instance, the one on King Street did get removed previously, uh, the DPW has systematically started going and removing stop signs that were not established by order. It, but some time ago, we decided to actually meet the national safety standards as far as uh, appropriate qualification for stop signs. Uh, this, as has been pointed out, as Director Lascalia has said, that this is an anomaly. This is unique in that respect. And, um, I, I think this is, uh, erring on the side of an abundance of caution, because it does not meet the warrants. Uh, actually, it doesn't meet that criteria, but there are standing criteria by which stop signs are now uh, established and placed. So the days of dead-end streets with stop signs at the end or something, those, those are gone. And, um, and I, I think Counselor Jarrett's right. I mean, I remember a constituent who once insisted that we put stop signs at every intersecting street on South Street. Which in and of itself, really, as you say, it makes no sense, because we are all taught, those of us who have legal licenses are taught that once you reach a road that intersects with another road, and particularly a major road, you're, you're to stop. Even common sense tells you that. Proceeding into a, into, into moving traffic is just a bad form without looking and stopping. But so the, uh, Counselor Foster's right, there are some standard and and guidelines, as you guys, uh, know, in TPC. So, and that for constituent purposes, should know that if they think many problems can be solved with a stop sign, though, discover that there are actually standards required in order for them to qualify. Now, anyway.
Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I, Counselor Foster, I know the intersection you're speaking of. And I advocated for that a few years ago, and I would appreciate that, that list. Maybe that could all, you know, of the guidelines for stop signs, just to be shared with all of us. That would be terrific.
Sure, I'd be glad to.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's vote on these stop signs. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Next is twenty point one five five, an ordinance relative to parking on Middle Street. Um, Section three twelve dash one oh two, the code ordinances be amended. Um, so Schedule one, parking prohibited at all times. Location's in Middle Street. The side is southerly from Maple Street to a point forty feet easterly of Maple Street.
Move to approve, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. And discussion, I think we queued up Counselor Jarrett, is that right? You can't see Counselor Jarrett, so.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is in my ward. Um, you might recall that we approved an ordinance to limit parking at the east end of Middle Street, where it meets Chestnut Street recently. Um, that was to improve sightlines, especially in the winter when the street is narrowed. Um, so residents at the west end, uh, after they heard about the east end one, uh, also requested a similar limit uh, where it meets Maple Street, so that, you know, vehicles that are turning onto Middle Street from Maple Street won't have conflicts with vehicles that are traveling west on Middle Street. Um, so there'll be basically space for two, two vehicles, even when, uh, the, the street is narrowed in the winter.
Okay, equal opportunity prohibited parking in both ends of the street. Any, Counselor Dwight?
Um, Counselor Nash also stressed that this allows for a large turning radiuses, large vehicles that require large turning radiuses, as opposed to driving across someone else's lawn or ripping off the front end of a car. Is, is that true, or did Counselor Nash make that up?
Counselor Jarrett, can you tell us?
Uh, no, but it sounds good.
Oh, God.
Ah, there you go.
All right, we'll never know. Counselor Nash made up, Counselor Nash, do you want to speak to the veracity?
I just want to say that I was doing my best to cover for Counselor Jarrett, who was unavailable. And that but it did have, it had something to do with plowing and sightlines and things like that, so. My apologies.
I appreciate your level of precision.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Dwight, we couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, I don't see any other business, so I think we can adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made, second and third and fourth, to adjourn on twenty twenty.
Right, that's right.
Goodbye, good riddance.
Counselor Jarrett. Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful holiday. Have a wonderful new year. May I see your actual faces and the rest of you in twenty twenty one?
Yeah, it's, it's safe, Steve.
That would be.